Planning Commission meeting for March 2015 to order. Could we please have a roll call?
Absolutely.
Mr. Moses.
Chairman Powell.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Chappell.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Coffin.
Here.
Commissioner Ogden.
Here.
And Commissioner Wood.
Here.
We do have a corner.
Yay. Obviously, unless you want to be public, we have no public comments.
We do not have anyone signed up under public comments.
Very well. I would make a motion or entertain for a motion that we table. Well, who was, everybody was here this last meeting, so let's see. We can vote on it, let's see. So, number three, approval of minutes from January 8th, 2015. Has everybody had a chance to look those over?
Yes.
I make motion, approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Sorry.
Not a problem.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes from January 8th, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carried.
Okay, discussion of design guidelines. Any information from?
Well, if you remember, in the January meeting, we talked, we kind of been discussing as a group, the need to kind of review the design guidelines and talk about anything that we would want. You don't have an action item on tonight's agenda, so, but you can kind of recommend to staff kind of what you'd like to see in enhancing it. I can even talk, I can even have the chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, who's with us here tonight, acting as chairman of the Planning Commission, talk about enhancing the historic preservation during the February meeting. Asked if we could have the Planning Commission consider strengthening development standards throughout this entire town, not just the historic town site. And so, I'm just going to kind of open it up to you. Obviously, Commissioner Coffin, I didn't get a chance to get him the binder of the last meeting that he was here, and so, he's kind of learning as we go throughout this meeting. But it's only four pages, so if anything has been kind of sticking out to anyone, I'd love to have staff take a look at whatever we can do to strengthen these, or any guidance you want to provide.
I'm pretty familiar with this since I was on that committee for commission for ten years too.
That's what I was thinking.
And at one time, Sue Durkey and I developed some, a proposal for landscape requirements for commercial properties.
Okay.
I'd like to bring that back up and look at it, because reading this, it's extremely vague. And we researched multiple cities' existing ordinances and compared to Edmonds, Oklahoma City's, Stillwater's.
They're a little bit more beefy than ours.
Oh, yeah, and much more specific. This has more specifics about residential landscaping than it does about commercial, which is really odd, because usually, commercial is much more detailed, because they're much bigger buildings and much more public than residential. So, I'd like to just pull that back out and look at it, see if we need to tweak it.
Do you remember a timeframe around that?
It's been ten years ago.
Okay.
But I don't think, since I work with that every day in the city in Edmonds, I don't think theirs have changed much.
Okay.
But that's something that I think should be addressed in sets of beautification. And we've had issues on division in that respect.
Yeah, I agree. I completely agree with you. I think staff would totally support that.
That was concerning the commercial side of it, right?
Yes.
I think the many things that we came up with are a problem, Cody. I recall several of them said, "Paul, you seem to have had a little outburst of these very simple, quickly made, quickly installed car covers that are blossomy." And so, we're really more to the residential side, and why these have not been governed a little bit better permit-wise or whatever, because this has been the problem, the major reason that this came up, as I recall, was they're not there, Mr. Wood. We suddenly heard of some of all that down, that just did not fit the decor of the neighborhood, didn't look like, didn't blend in with the home. And it looks to me like our residential neighborhood, we either need to toughen those up so that the wishes of, I think, our constituents are followed there. And apparently, what we have here, I guess, is not strong enough. Do you have any thoughts, staff-wise, on what we need to do to make sure that these little, just little block covers don't pop up? They were supposed to, if they're going to have them, they would either be at the side of the house, or at the back of the home. And what's happening, we are seeing them now starting to pop up at the front, and it is definitely detrimental to the neighborhood look. And that's what, to the charm and stuff add. So, what do we need to do to toughen those up, in your thought there?
Some of it is, I'm going to jump in here real quick. It seems like some of that's up to interpretation here, because it's a little, I would interpret it one way, but somebody else may be thinking something different, but under the roofs, no corrugated metal roofs are permitted. I would think that, that's what most of those are made out of, isn't it? The ones I've seen, they're either metal or vinyl or some sort of...
Standing seam or something.
Right, but to me, that's covered under number four, where it says, "No shaker corrugated metal roofs are permitted." So, that's one thing that's a problem. The conflict's with the existing ordinance, which would seem very simple, but the other one, it says home additions. I mean, the new design must be the same roofline, same plane, similar style sizing architectural features. So, you can't tell me an aluminum addition on the front is the same as a siding or brick house.
Exactly.
And the roofline's completely different, because they're all angled versus gabled, and so, it's in conflict with number nine as well.
And of number 11, outbuildings, because if you consider it's... Now, one thing I want to go here, these, as I understand it, this is not an ordinance. This is just design standards. These are just, we're suggesting you do this. Now, and I feel though, that this needs to become with, again, more teeth, and turn the building design standards for both commercial and residential into an actual ordinance.
Something that we can adopt. I completely agree. And that's kind of where I was heading, is what you said about interpretation, you're exactly right. You've, I mean, you've nailed it, because what the interpretation led to the problems was, okay, number 11, my building inspector says an outbuilding.
Yeah.
He says that he inspects buildings, and buildings are defined according to the IBC code as something with four walls, and you know, doors and everything like that. He said, "These aren't buildings, I don't have jurisdiction."
Four walls.
And so, here's what I want to do, is talk about, you know, take, take the ideas from tonight, and in future Planning Commission meetings, we talk about adopting these in by resolution to where, to, I'm laughing earlier, because Ed and I talked about, you know, I'm trying to have, I like to always have solutions to problems, not just talk about problems. I want to, I want to have something. So, talk about maybe putting in here, that's adopted by the resolution, that accessory buildings don't go up without Planning Commission approval. Or a recommendation approved by council from the Planning Commission, so you guys see them first. I don't mean to be bureaucratic and slow the process down, but I do want to give the neighborhood an opportunity to voice their opinion. And I want, I mean, we operate by, you know, a community. And so, I want the community to be involved in everything that we do as best they can. Sue Ducharme told me, everyone knows Sue, there, the last few have gone up that have just really kind of set a little bit uncomfortable with them, because the neighbors felt like it happened overnight. And they didn't, they weren't, you know, kind of equipped with enough notification. And, and the problem with me hearing that was, we notified, we did exactly what we were supposed to. And you know what, it just might have happened in a weird awkward timeframe for people to where they couldn't, they either couldn't make it, or, you know, didn't receive the letter, and, you know, might have been on vacation, whatever. But I think that the resolution adopted by the city council, saying that the Planning Commission needs to make recommendation for accessory buildings and those kinds of things, I think that that would give it a lot of strength. And that this entire building design standard would be adopted by council as well.
I think we may want to go even more broad and just say any structure.
Okay.
So, it's an outbuilding.
Carport.
And including an addition to a house. So, if there's any structure proposed for a lot or addition, that it needs to go through this process.
That's right.
That way, it's not let up to staff or whoever, and then they don't get in trouble. It's, we can look at it. If we get so many of them were inundated, then maybe we need to make some ground rules specific.
To clarify, would they... Even nine, even kind of, because that is home additions. New work must be compatible with mass, massing size and scale and architectural features. So, these carports are an addition.
Right.
They're not...
Are permits required for these?
For sure.
No S and R, but are permits, there seems to be some confusion there too.
Permits have been issued.
Well, that is quite clarified. Are permits required?
Yes.
Are folks supposed to be getting a permit before one of these shows up? "Well, I just saw one pop up, and I can tell you, money, marbles and chalk, there wasn't a permit issued."
But...
It wasn't permit asked for, I'll put it that way.
The issue with the permit is, that's a, that's a one-on-one process. That is, the community development office dealing with the applicant, and those neighbors in that neighborhood wouldn't have the opportunity to hear what's going on.
Just shave work.
When it comes before Planning Commission, you know, it's on two different public agendas, because a reminder, you know, you make, you make recommendations to city council. We can't really do any specific variances or anything like that through this board, but you make the recommendations to council. So, that's two public meetings that the community is invited to, and that sets a lot better, in my opinion, as far as having a unified understanding of what's going on, and having, having a neighborhood feel like a community.
Well, I think these, these folks should know that, Commissioner Jones, when they come in for one of these permits for a carport, we need to see a footprint. We need to see their house roughly stretched, or I should put, you know, there to permit, here's their home, so that you can see that it is on the side or behind, at least meeting some of the criteria that we have here.
We need a still drawing.
Certainly not in the front.
And some elevations.
Yeah.
Certainly not in the front.
And, I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily be the engineered elevations, but I mean, you can take a Google image, you know, shrink the image, and then just draw right next to it where it's going to be, or anything.
Right, or brochure, or...
And we can...
The person building it has to have some information, so if they, if they have enough information to be able to build it, that should be enough for us to figure out what it's going to look like.
And my point with saying that, because I completely agree with you, is it's just the fact that it might be slowing down the process, but we are still trying to help, help the process how long as much as we can.
And protect the other neighbors, so that they're aware of what's going on and the property values and the overall look.
Well, there's a reason we're slowing down the process, so they just don't pop up like mushrooms, and the people next door are going like, "What just happened?" And I mean, so they're...
I know that on commercial buildings, when they do these things and they get a permit, they have to put it in their window, basically. It used to be that way.
Supposed to.
You're supposed to display it somewhere on the property that's visible from the street, so someone can tell they're doing work in here. This is when they got, they do have their permits, it's all legitimate.
Right.
That sort of thing. I'm wondering if we want to do the same thing with residential, give them a little yard sign to stick out there, so that the neighbors can kind of have a heads up, because not everybody watches the show.
Yeah.
And they have, yeah, and then they have to put the, and it could just be a cheap, you know, one of those, almost like a political sign, that they stick in their yard, that part of their fees cover it, but then if you're driving down the street and you notice one in your neighbor's yard next door, and it has to stay there for X amount of days, then that'll be your heads up to ask or look into, there's something that's going to happen here. It may be in the backyard, it may be an addition, it may be something, but...
In a lot of places, they just take them to the front door.
That's right.
Or the, or a yard, depending on what is available.
But I don't think you see that, because houses, so many of the doors don't face the street, and the windows, it could fall out.
Well, it has to be facing the street, something that...
Right, it should be so many feet from the street or the sidewalk, or someplace where it's visible in the front yard, that's not like a real estate sign, that sort of thing. And that way, the neighbors have a heads up, and it says on the sign what it is.
Right.
You know, this person has applied for...
And you'll see all over Edmonds right now, you'll see our city attorney's name plastered all over everything with different rezonings that he's helping an applicant on, and so, I really like that idea. I don't know...
It shouldn't cost the city much to do signs, and they can bring them back and put a deposit down or whatever, and do it, but...
Do you know that, do you know if you've seen any other cities doing that?
Yes.
But I really...
I have.
You have?
Yes.
Okay.
And they, well, not, well, Texas and Illinois.
Okay.
They, if you do not have, and they're very vigilant, they, if you do not have a permit, and it's in a sack, just like for building a brand-new house, it is taped to the front door or to the front window. If it's not there, you will be getting a knock on the door from, or if they see a, say, a roll-off trash bin, or if they see materials set right in the front yard without anything, there will be somebody knocking on the door from the code enforcement, and it's, and then you will get inspected, and they inspect everything.
One other little item that relates to these, and a lot of we see they're popping up in the front yard, I mean, right in the front, over the existing driveway.
Yeah.
I think we also have something in our codes that if you're going to be parking your vehicle on your property, other than your driveway, it has to have hard surface. So, that being the case, there may be a necessity to mention in here where these are, these type of structures are by the side of the home. And again, hopefully, we're addressing also the view of them, not just the typical one. There's some decent ones around, there's some flat roof ones, and some with a little bit of, you know, an arch design, so they, they fit a little bit better than what you see. We probably need to make sure that we address the fact, if there's a necessity for a hard surface under their concrete, asphalt or the like, that needs to be part of it also, Cody, as we, as we bring these, update these things.
That was obviously a big deal during our last major concert, was parking on, you know, solid surfaces, because everyone over by the Convent flats wanted to charge for parking in their yard and everything like that. So, I want to go back a little bit, I heard something I'm interested in. Commissioner Coffin talked about any structure that's built. So, just looking down the pipeline, I can tell you, we're looking at kind of a larger scale, mixed-use development coming to Guthrie. Would you be okay with seeing, you know, different elevations from the builders or something in their, their packet that shows...
Their covenants and restrictions.
Right, their covenants that shows that, you know, they're not allowing carports. Is that something that you're interested in, or?
Definitely.
Yes, that would be something that would be great to have come before the commissions and boards.
Because, you know, we're, we're obviously not going to put it, put together a, you know, an agenda with 300 lots with developments on them, but if, if you guys saw the elevations and saw the covenants that showed that they're not going to allow that, would that, would that satisfy everyone, it sounds like?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good start, and you know, at least because homeowners, then they would have to come in before the city or the board if they wanted to change those covenants.
Right.
Or restrictions that they'd put on it. As far as...
Custom houses, or are these like planned, planned houses?
Pretty much.
That you're going to pick your, your model and put it on a lot, sort of thing?
You're going to, you're going to see a lot of that, but when I say mixed-use, you really are going to see, you're going to see multifamily, you're going to see a little bit of office space incorporated into the, into the pod, and the majority of it, I'd say almost 80% of it is going to be your typical R1, single-family home. But just for full disclosure, I always leave all the cards out on the table, that's kind of what you'll see with that development. Possibly even some very exciting new commercial space thrown in, thrown in on that as well, if they can get the school land commission to partner in, so...
Does that include like street layout, sidewalks, ADA compliance, all that kind of stuff? So, is that something we would look at at the same time we see that?
That is, yes.
That we do.
Street lighting?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done that before for the communities on the west side, off of Academy and different things, they'll, they bring us the, it's several different things, but they bring us the top platen, and they, then the developer, we see how it's going to be developed, the sewer, sewage systems, where they get laid, the sanitary and both rainwater easements.
Underground electrical.
I hope.
One other question, going back to where they...
Engineers.
Again, I think what I'm, we're seeing is that some of these, going back to these carport things, they're going up like overnight. I just heard, heard somebody mention, suddenly the neighbors look out and this is done. Because those are, I'm sure those are installed in a matter of three or four hours by experienced crew. How do we, how do we make sure that these, these builders of these are made aware of the fact that, don't install one of those in Guthrie without making sure that your client runs through the permit process, or at least drops in...
That's a serious question.
Huh? Is there a way to let these manufacturers, these installers know, "Don't be coming in telling your, your potential buyer there, 'We can do this, we'll have this done, you ordered today, we'll put it up tomorrow.'"
You know, I think, obviously...
I could jump in here, I really don't feel that, I mean, it would be nice if the builders had some knowledge of that, but it's really not up to the builder to be aware of such things. The people call them, and the person or the G C, the general contractor, whoever that may be, whether it's a homeowner or say, a hired contractor, now, those need to be aware of the city guidelines and rules, and that's why you have to be licensed by the city for, to do different things. And that's, and they know the rules.
You don't have that, you don't have that situation, or the G C...
Not right now.
I said, the G C, in most of these cases, it's the homeowner.
And if they throw it up, then they get fined, or they have, they get fined and the thing has to come down.
And that's the big thing, you have to make the fines enough, have some keep behind it, otherwise, they're just going to go, "Oh, well, I'm paying this fine and I got what I wanted."
Yeah.
It's a slap in the hand.
Yeah, it's just like, yeah.
Or theoretically, you tear one down.
Or you have, let move it or take it out, right, exactly.
You almost need to put it like a tobacco. I mean, because that's what they're trying to prevent.
Right.
Hell damage, or, you know, when any kind of weather damage, I mean, you almost have to...
They're doing this to protect their vehicles.
Sure.
I have a question about that, and you can't blame them. But they need to know, but the average homeowner, not like a G C where they got to have the permit, I mean, they got to have their city license or anything, so they just see another one in town, and, "Right, got to go to the IBC, little carport place, why don't put me one in?"
I know that if Mr. Chappell was joining us tonight, he could tell you exactly where you can find a pop-up tent, because he sent me the photo a few different times to remind me of what's happened in the past few months, so...
Do we need to further address, if we're going to clarify these, what the looks and stuff need to be like? Because if that's the case, maybe we need to get around and take some pictures of some that, well, do we reluctantly go along with that? That could probably be the minimal, that we might say that matches the home enough or probably won't upset the neighborhood, versus, no, this is not what we don't.
Well, the problem with that is, there's such a broad variety of architectural styles here, that I don't think you can say, yes, this fits that house, or this fits that house, or it doesn't fit that house. That's the problem.
Well, the architectural style, the main thing I've seen is these just little, these little canopy pop-up like...
Right, but I think that's where this comes to more, what's more important, is maybe we should make more of a rule that it shouldn't be visible from the front yard. If they put that in the backyard, it doesn't affect that many people, especially if they have a privacy fence or something.
You know our problem there, and we've already heard it, is that some people can't get to their backyard, they don't have out.
Front drive, and that's it.
And it's not available on the side to drive by.
Well, that's why we've had it broad enough that it can be, as long as behind the face, the, you know, the front elevation of the face, you can be at the side of the home.
Right.
And those are the ones that really start affecting the need to address what they look like are more important than so much in the back.
Even with the location, maybe not being able to be something that we can address right away, I still don't think that you would need to put it in the designs into the resolution, because at the end of the day, they're still coming to you for your approval or your recommendation. And so, you can tell them right then, you know, "Hey, if you can agree to do this," or, you know, "We don't want to see this style," but we can, you know, maybe every time that we have them apply, we do have a list of things that you've, you know, kind of given staff a head nod on.
Do's and don'ts, and this is what you...
Right. Even if we can provide that to them either beforehand or during the meeting, that might be able to solve, you know, without, without forcing you guys into something, because words in an adopted resolution, you know, are something that you have to act on, and so, I don't want to limit ourselves too much. I want you guys to have the flexibility that's needed to perform the customer service.
Well, some of them may, some of them may complement the house, it kind of, it kind of depends a little bit on what their home looks like too. Because some units may complement their house better than a different one, and I'm not so sure. Maybe if they bring them in, for, at least for us, to look at, we need to see a picture of their home, and then what they're intending to put there, so that, does this fit? Does this actually complement your home and the neighborhood? Or does it clash terribly and just so far out of sight?
And that also gives the commission and code enforcement's also teeth, because if what goes up isn't what was brought before the board, I mean, it could be, they could be a gabled cut roof that matches the house really nicely, or, and then when it's all said and done, they put up one of these pop-up metal buildings, but it, and it's like, no, 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 that wasn't what was...
So, what was your... We're not recreating the wheel, because I'm sure this has happened in other cities.
Yes, it is happening in other cities.
I guess my question is, instead of us going through the same things that these other cities have done to try to solve this problem, we've done research to find out what other cities are saying, especially historic cities, that's really where we have an issue, is we're trying to continue the overall look of the city and make it contiguous with the way it's always been, rather than...
We've seen, we've seen a lot of it come, kind of what you're talking about with historic cities, in the Tulsa metro. It hasn't really been done in Oklahoma City metro in historic communities, because theirs is already so...
Strict.
So tight.
Yes.
So, but in your Claremores, in your Bartlesvilles, you've seen things like that. We've gotten some information on those already, so we're a little bit ahead of the pace. I wasn't trying to tell you guys what to do tonight, but I am, you know, kind of hearing that you guys want to move forward with this, and so, you'll have that whenever we look to...
Can we see what some of the others are doing?
To kind of compare what they've done versus what we're talking about versus...
Like I said, I think, I think the two...
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea, that way we can...
The two that really do kind of mine are Bartlesville and Claremore, if I, if I remember correctly.
That way, we're not inventing the, inventing the wheel.
Right, but they might have some ideas that didn't occur to us.
Yes.
So, it's kind of nice to see...
We did that with the signs, it really helped us out, and we borrowed ideas from the city for their signs.
And that's what we did with the landscape one too, so it makes sense to learn from other people going through this process.
Absolutely. It saved stock.
Your landscape comment drew us more toward the commercial side of it.
It was, it was all right.
And moving, and if we can, I'd like to talk a little bit about commercial. As far as residential, because we are quite an eclectic neighborhood, you know, city of different architectural styles, all the way from Victorian to, gosh, brand-new ranch-style homes, though, it's kind of nice to have the guidelines and just give some people some ideas of this is what you need to do to match what you have. But I think on, on the commercial side, we could tighten that up and actually turn some of these commercial building standards into, say, a more tightly regulated ordinance of how the buildings are designed to complement, or a lot like what IBC did, so, they did the arched openings, they, they worked with the architecture to help match with the Victorian downtown architecture.
Right, and it depends on where it is. I think if it's in the historic district, or along a main street, it makes sense to really try to be consistent. But if it's in other areas, I think we can give them flexibility to do a completely different style. It could be modern, it could be whatever, because we don't want to create fake history. I mean, that's the whole idea.
But that's the thing, we're not, we're not mimicking the old buildings, but we're, just like Edmonds, everything is brick.
Yes.
They will not put, let anything else but brick buildings go up, which is something that, you know, now, in certain areas, that's, like what you're saying, there's things that...
I'd rather see more variety and let people be creative and use stone, glass, metal, whatever they want to do, more like we're seeing on 16th Street and 23rd Street, you know, because that's more interesting, and it's...
We wanna give it way out.
Well, right, but again, if it works for them and it's, you're not mangling a historic building, you're building something new.
Exactly.
So it's, I think it's very different than in a residential, as long as the scale and proportion and setbacks and all of that are consistent with everything else, I think we should give more flexibility on the commercial side to do what they wanna do, as long as in the, in the historic district, I think that's different.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I agree. And, and I think that you, one kind of good example about flexibility, kind of working, maybe not the materials that were used, but the new Spoonful Pharmacy and Hallmark Building, that's a, you know, that was kind of a Rene Spinetto type of influence because the parking's in the back, you don't see the parking for them. And so we've, we've shown some, you know, hey, let's think about doing this kind of thing. Like I said, it's not necessarily the materials, but I think that we are kind of equating the same things here and there, so.
Yeah. And I think that's a great idea, that it sets a precedent that's much nicer to look at from the street than it is to see the sea of cars and asphalt and parking lots in the front, which you see in most cities. It's nice to see that.
So you'll have these ready here in a week?
No. Have I ever made a promise to you like that?
Perhaps in a serious vein, when, when might, we have something that, no, would you be giving us a little package that we could see what they're doing, say in Bartlesville or something, so we get, we can maybe borrow a few ideas?
Yeah.
Or even just a synopsis, I don't think we need to see all of their thing, but you could probably take each cities and kinda do, here's what, here's how they approached it and make a synopsis of each one so we could kind of read through them and go, okay, I get that. They took this approach, they took this approach, and if we want more detail, I think we could get into it, but.
I just think we need to get on it because I probably had a half a dozen phone calls and I know you didn't, I don't think you had any, Joe.
Nobody knows where I am.
That'd be a catch, you know.
I don't give you my phone number, I mean.
That's what's great is I can always get you guys that information. I can send you guys whatever I need to. Your, your communication back and forth with each other is limited through open meetings act, but I can send you guys whatever information and if you have questions, you can give me a call and just say how to, you know, I, I interpret it this way, do you agree, blah, 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 and we can do that feedback going forth, back and forth so that you're well prepared for that meeting.
Which is also need to make it easier for you folks there at the planning commission, I mean, right at the permit counter.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody who, no, I, I, this just would not, this would not fly and this here's kinda what it is and, and it's clear and simple and, and then it's gonna need to go before the commission and things like that and, because it sounds like right now that as I'm talking to Jim over there and stuff, it's, it's a little difficult for them to.
I, I think that the hard part is just you guys, I mean, you guys are very empowered. I mean, you guys have the authority, staff can't speak for you guys. And so we always wanna walk a very fine line of trying to give information, I, I, you saw it with the Board of Adjustment meeting that came through, talking about the latest billboard that wanted to come through and go on I-35 and Stewart Road. So we, we were able to kinda give them a little bit of guidance on what they might want to focus on and even, even talk about, you know, talk about how they're gonna be different. But we're, we're never gonna say, hey, with this you'll get passed. We'll, we'll, we'll always hesitate on.
But, and I think this'll happen over time with the history of us looking at these carports or whatever the issue is, much like the historic district. I've applied for many applications for doing all kinds of things to downtown buildings and when I went in for an, for a application to fill it in, I would talk to Rene who was there and they did say, you know, these things have passed in the past through the commission very easily. These things have been issues of contention, so you might reconsider this or think about changing it around or, or this is gonna be a really serious discussion. So you, so at least whoever applies for it is aware of the history and they're not trying to recreate the wheel and they're not gonna come in and get balked over the head.
Right. You don't want me telling people to bring boxing gloves with them.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's gonna happen, but.
It will.
But the nice thing, it's just, and that's something, using that H P as an example cause Ed and I have both been on it and it's been going on for so long that, and it's fair for everyone, cause they know what to expect and it's in everyone's best interest to keep everything consistent. And I think this is really the same thing.
I agree.
We're just trying to expand on something that has worked for twenty-some years, so there's no reason not to do the same thing and it lets staff help guide people so they're not going down the wrong path.
Right.
And wasting their time and their money applying for something that there's no way it's going to work.
Right, cause they're gonna have.
Simply can't let people do that.
Well, we, we definitely wanna look at what, what our folks in the community want and know that, you know, that it'll, that they don't have to go through a complete unbelievable process to get a simple and carport done, but they need to know at least what has been acceptable or what's now gonna be acceptable.
And there.
Because I can see them saying, well, that's been done, here's that, well, yeah, but that, that was before.
That's what the last rule.
And that's, and that's why things have changed, it's because of that, so that's.
I get a kind of a wry smile thinking about, and there are those people that are just gonna try their luck and think that, you know, so we can.
Ask forgiveness.
Smooth, smooth talk or ask forgiveness and, well, you let me get over with this and so can I, can I do this too? And I, it's, Ed, Ed understands where I'm going on.
The one thing, the commission drove out, how can we, how can we address also if
we're gonna do this? And I know this from there, somebody bootlegs one in, we call that a bootlegger, I'm an old contractor and sometimes you just shoot things in. How are we going to make sure that these folks understand whether it's after the fact or whatever, whether they're through, through a fine? Again, you need to pay big brother there, but they need to know that these just cannot be bootlegged in without some sort of consequences. How can this also be added as part of this coating?
Right. You said a very specific word that I, I think is kind of key and that's consequence. Because a slap on the wrist is gonna empower more people to go ahead and just do the exact same thing. We can talk to rate and fee advisory committee and I can tell you, I think if it's strong enough, you're not gonna see that problem, you know, kinda popping up all over the place.
If it costs more than the carport?
Well, obviously, of course, one thing is gotta come down.
Right, that's what I thought. A better solution might be, there aren't fines, you need to remove it because that's not acceptable.
And you know, that's, that's something.
And if it's not removed within so many days, then there's.
Nobody would like that.
And you still have to remove.
And the fine keeps repeating until it is gone.
Yes.
Within, every month or whatever.
Nobody would like to have.
We can always, it might not be something that we can expect cash about, but I can tell you, our police chief is very strict on anything that is kind of due to us going over to the county and filing those links. I can tell you that he has been very adamant about, about it in his short tenure.
Good. Productive, I think that's good.
Yes.
We definitely need to put, draw a line in the sand and be consistent.
I agree.
It's in everyone's best interest to say, very clear, this is what we expect. If you differ from that at all, there's gonna be consequences.
And I, I think now is a good time.
Nice thing about the Historic Preservation District is that because we do have a, actually there is an ordinance that this, and we, it is.
Very specific.
It's very specific, we have a red book that hand, is handed out to every building owner and it's time, and in fact, it's time for that to be revamped a little bit, but in essence, it is working and people are really fairly good about knowing what they can and what they can't do.
Or at least trying to find out before they do something.
And that is what, well, because it's easier that it's a commercial area because people come in wanting to use it as a commercial business, it's a little different if you're to work in a residential area. It becomes, because now you have neighbors and you're, you're, there's a lot of different personalities involved in, with, in the business community. We all know that's the whole reason Guthrie is why it is, it's why it's the destination is mainly because of the antiquity of the buildings and that's one of the major draws here, so people pretty well know and it makes it a little easier to maintain that. And I mean, every now and again, somebody's gonna come up with something that's a little out of the ordinary and, or off the wall and just like, it's like, no, we can't allow that or, you know, or sometimes it's.
Sometimes you can make it work.
You can, exactly.
Like an amphitheater house.
Yeah.
Not something you see downtown every day.
Not.
I think talking about the line in the sand, I think it's, I think it's an important time for us to really address this too because I'll, I'll tell you, very similar to what I told the Historic Preservation Commission back in January, there are things building up and there's a, there's a pipeline of activity that you're gonna start seeing, you know, a lot of different stuff happening and this, this last meeting was, was a pretty substantial agenda with the Historic Preservation Commission. The, the next one's gonna be twice as long. I think for planning commission, now's a good time because I think that there are, on the, on the near horizon, there's gonna be growing pains. But when we pass that horizon and people are coming to Guthrie knowing what to expect of new development, not just the historic district, I think that that's when we won't see these things popping up that we're having to, to fight near as much, but people are just understanding of what our expectations are. But I think right now there are a little bit of growing pains with, you know, what we're, what we're gonna be facing with these next few larger developments.
So that's a good problem to have.
It is a great problem.
The big thing is we need to be ahead of it with these things and right now I feel like we're behind.
Yeah.
Because it hasn't been addressed at all for a very long time and most cities, our size are slightly larger, already have those things in place and it's easier to be consistent if they're there before the development starts.
I guess I don't, I, I don't disagree with that, I don't, I don't love hearing it that, that we're behind, but I, I also wouldn't disagree with them.
The other thing I think would be good while we're talking about new developments, anything the city can do to encourage infill houses?
Yes.
We have a lot of empty lots, a lot of derelict houses, a lot of just vacant lots in big portions of the city. And I know it's not something unique to Guthrie by any means, most cities have that problem, not quite to our extent sometimes.
Right.
But I, I'd like to see some way that we could try to encourage people to put infill houses since there's already infrastructure, there's water sewer, streets, streetlights, sidewalks, all these things that the city's invested in that are sitting there in some cases, blocks and blocks of, of no one enjoying it. Then you've got new addition herbal, urban sprawl that keeps happening and the issue with urban, with rural water district that compounds that, which I don't even wanna get into that, but, but it's true. So, and I know other cities, especially in Texas, my brother lives in Houston and we've had conversations about how they deal with it and they have definitely given some incentives to people to build custom houses in neighborhoods that have a lot of empty lots or do infill houses for when burned or was torn down and try to push individuals or developers and make it serious incentive so that it's in their best interest and more economically viable to do that.
I'll tell you some of the most recent infill projects, I don't know why, for what reason they, it happened to just kinda fall, but you know, boom, 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 four, four infill projects in a row were kind of focused on the west side and they are all shot down because of they don't wanna deal with the floodway or floods on, floods on problems or any kind of flooding.
Cut off, meaning from the city?
Yeah, that's exactly what it was. Someone was interested in Banner School doing infill housing on that lot and just kind of clearing it, which of course, that's a completely different issue and they're just so, so worried about flood.
Isn't the bridge scheduled to be?
It is.
Expanded and isn't there, aren't they gonna elevate the roadway and do a bunch of plants?
With the problem, the problem with the unknown in, in those developers' minds. And so it's not that they've just been chased off from Guthrie, they, they did go to the east side, but I just, I thought that was interesting and something I, I'd like to share with you guys.
So they put the projects on hold on the west side until the bridge is in basically?
Right, and you've seen, you have seen a lot of T L C being done to the, to some of the west side projects by probably some more Guthrie, Guthrie-based folks, the, the four that I mentioned earlier, none of them had Guthrie ties, so they automatically just look for a different location.
Right.
But that's something interesting that I thought, I thought I'd share with you, but I agree with you on infill housing. I, I'd be really interested to see what other, other communities have done for incentivizing it because that would be a, that'd be a fun project in my mind. I, you know, I kind of look for those, those things that can make us different and so I think that that would be a big step in the right direction.
I agree.
Another little item, just for maybe put it on the record, we talked a little bit about it and I don't know how much this falls under planning other than the fact that the original project did. Been a few people and of course, once you find out that you're associated with the city, then they'll come and talk to you and that's fine, that's what we're here for. A lighting problem that has now come up since the, the, just the project has been completed has to do with the new church right there, right next to rural water, their parking lot lighting. And of course, just, you don't know this until you put the lights up and actually focus them. I've been asked, who can they go to? Some of those lights that you round the corner, going, say, southbound, you round the corner going down water, excuse me, sooner, those lights are very dangerous. They're extremely bright, two or three of them are too high. How do we, is that fall under, how, is that part of, say, Jim's, you know, he doesn't, he can't come out and check the lights, you know, when you're doing, writing off the fine on the project and thing, but somebody needs to check those lights at night. You'd never see it during the day and electricians are there, they're just setting them right, you just understand it. How does that, that's become a problem a couple of spots, I assume, too.
It is obviously designed, it's just a matter of.
It just needs to be adjusted, how does that happen?
Making sure the right staff person approaches them.
Who's that?
Making sure that the right staff person approaches them, talking about what we can do because we, we talked about this in, in one of the last times I've ever seen it and we, we tried taking care of it, we tried going to look at them and I don't know if anything's been done.
It's a safety issue, there's no question about it.
If we're, if we're still having that same problem, then maybe another.
Jim Fish has only got so far.
Maybe another badge needs to go.
It's, it's something that's got to be seen at night, somebody's gotta go out there at seven thirty, eight at night, well, not later now, daylight saving. But those lights, it was almost like the first time we had some problems with the, with the new sign there at the Baptist Church, the, the digital sign was too bright, later on it was blinding when you came up sooner and you just let them know and they, they toned it down. But these just need to be readjusted. Does that start with us, does that start with, with, with?
For commercial?
Who do we let, who do we let know this?
In the future with new construction, it would go through us, wouldn't it?
Well, we'd look at lighting, I, I feel that, but it's still a light and it depends on how it's aimed. I would not see it coming through us, it would be more, a citizen sees or like you see a problem where it's dangerous going down the road, it is turned into, say, well, Mr. Mosley or to Jim Fish and code enforcement, say, you know, because it's, it would be a, it would be a nuisance type of thing, so that would be go in front of, you know, code enforcement at that point being, if it's perceived, perceived as a nuisance and then he would take it and go to the building owners or, or the people that.
See, the only reason I bring it up to you Cody is that because I'm sure, you know, we went through the whole permit, they went through the whole permit and Jim, our Hanky is down there, he's checking things out and this is really a final completion, all right, we've signed the project off, it's great, the folks love it and it's a nice, nice addition to our neighborhood and suddenly somebody realizes that a little further adjustment's done necessary because.
And that's, that's where I probably would say.
And I didn't know whether that needs to go through, through, you know, with the permit, your permit officer or what.
I think we'll always take any customer complaints, whether they go to our office or not, because we'll make sure that they go to the right office when, when that customer leaves. Like I did, we, we checked on this before. If it, if it's not something that they take very serious, we'll continue to increase our presence addressing the issue until it's, it's taken care of.
It's as simple as getting ahold of their job electrician and saying, hey, those lights need a little further adjustment and the job's done and, and a nice addition to the whole community.
About lighting, a lot of cities, speaking of that, Austin, Texas, I believe, does a good job about light pollution, cause it's a big deal on light bouncing back to the sky and creating constant problems. It wouldn't be bad to.
Called dark sky compliant, I am a very big actor. It is, yeah, we wanna be, and I was really, yes, it is light pollution, it is a major problem. It is, I am a advocate for dark sky compliance.
If we could get an ordinance that basically covers that, that encourages or requires new businesses and parking lots to abide by that because.
There are lighter fixtures that are dark sky compliant, they're checked off for that, it is a big thing, yes.
It directs the light to the ground, not to the sky and you don't have a lot of these issues, but we'd be ahead of the game if we went ahead and put that in an ordinance and just require them to put that type fixture in.
Okay.
And LEDs of course, by the way things are going.
Add that to the bottom part of your plate.
It's a commercial, I really think that's something that we could set off in our list of things that we look at.
I tried to get that done with the new lights going down Oklahoma, but since O G and E put them in, they were not interested because they put them in and so they just put them in.
And you know, that probably possibly would've addressed this situation where the parking lot lights were more directed for the parking lot, might've addressed this situation.
That's what I'm saying, you didn't have to fix that problem if we said, you can That's what I'm saying, you would have to fix that problem if we said you can use these type lights as long as they have these requirements with hood shields, directionals, LEDs, that sort of thing.
We're working with a team right now on different non-development issues, but you know, their tagline is create responsibly. And, and kind of what I feel like can transition is develop responsibly and when I, when I say responsibly, I guess I mean with intention. You know, not just saying what's been done in every other cookie cutter town in Oklahoma. But you know, what is Guthrie doing to be responsible for future generations of development and putting us in a right. Putting us in the right path, I guess, moving forward because, you know, our demographics aren't quite there to where people are just knocking down our door for a lot of things. But we also want to show that we are very intentional and if, if you're going to do that same thing in Austin, why wouldn't you expect to do it in every great community across America?
Well, it is again, that's what Mr. Kaufman was saying is that we want to be ahead of the game, we want to have these, these rules and regulations in place before. We wished we.
Aaron can join us, just nailing, just hold that.
Getting the crickets, yeah.
And I believe that's the, that's the same direction that the cities that I remember reading about and discussing with my brother. They were using the carrot instead of the stick approach, if it's a abandoned house, the taxes for that property were twice what they were for the house next door that was livable. And that way you're encouraging people either fix it, occupy it or tear it down, but it's the same thing, the taxes on empty lot were higher than a house. So they're either going to sell it to someone that'll build on it or then you get the required activity that you want rather than encouraging people to let them become an abandoned house. Which is the way it is now, because they, they basically have less taxes than the people that abide by the rules and are a good neighbor and keep their property up. So you're penalizing the ones that are doing the right thing and you're.
Yes.
Giving benefits to the ones that are messing up your process.
I've heard Washington DC does the same thing, an abandoned house, the taxes go up exponentially.
Yes, every year.
Yes, every year until it is, and then once somebody takes it over, drops back down to the.
Yes.
Status quo, whatever.
And that's how you get it to change, it's all about the dollar and if they can save money by not repairing something indefinitely.
I brought that up in meetings before too.
Well, and then you get it just, it is a generational thing at that point because, you know, maybe the grandparents didn't take care of it and, you know, the grandkids fall. You know, they get a phone call saying thirty years down the road, oh, you're the owner of this property that you've never seen before. And it's because they didn't have any incentive to move on it beforehand and you don't have to worry about it.
If the taxes are fifteen dollars a year, they didn't care because they didn't notice.
Interesting point, get a little initiative going, and we used to have a little program here and maybe you're still doing it. When Renee was here, she occasionally had a report on some of the homes that were the worst in the city was taking action to actually remove them. I haven't seen that happening for a little while, are we still?
We're still doing it.
We still.
We're very adamant about it, right now, if you, if you've seen the latest dilapidated topic, we're kind of battling right now with one major dilapidated structure to. But removing it would be over the entire annual budget. That list of dilapidated structures has exceeded a hundred and five.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
It's exceeded a hundred.
And that proves my point, I think if we're not aggressive in our solution, it's only going to get worse because what we've been doing so far.
Absolutely.
Hasn't done anything.
You've seen that in just a very short time since that list has been done, it's every single year, it's grown.
Right.
And, and that's hard because you want to put in an action plan. That's, that's hard to swallow that, that that number would grow.
But in some ways it's more income for the city and it's turning things around is what we're talking about.
There's going to be a lot of back pressure on that, I'm sure, but I mean, but it'll have to come about because you're right, because if it doesn't, it's just going, the.
It's a snowball.
The light will keep growing.
And we're not talking about picking on the elderly or the poor, we're, I mean, most of those people, there are, there are plenty of places and plenty of volunteers and have path humanity and the lady that came to the last meeting that I thought was wonderful, that's done all the improvements and. Helping the community and fixing people's houses where they can.
Beautiful.
Exactly.
With such charms.
Right, there's all kinds of things to help those people, I'm talking about absentee landlords, I'm talking about people that have slumlord properties that just don't keep them up. I mean, they don't care because they don't live here. That's the kind of thing that hurts the city and it hurts our image and it hurts the neighborhoods and they're hazards.
It hurts growth.
Exactly.
I've got one that was a perfect opportunity for a, I'd say a. Mid to major employer in town, they were going to have forty five people that they were looking in downtown specifically and the, the owner has, you know, just junk in there and not really anything else. It's probably not who everyone's thinking about, but it's, it's a different one, but they just then know we want to, we want to leave it and that's a, that's a terrible problem because I just told this. You know, this company that was bringing in thirty five, forty five jobs, sorry, we, we actually don't have anywhere for you now. It's tough.
Yeah.
It's tough, so.
And I'm not talking about houses that are for sale and they're empty because they're for sale, you know, I'm talking about properties that are not habitable and no one's trying to lease it, sell it.
You know, they don't, they don't have a roof.
They're not making any attempt, there's trees growing out of it.
The cats are running in and out of the roof.
Right, exactly. That's right.
Twice a week, we get around, the wife and I, with, with our food delivery, with the, with our, our program and we have an awful lot of homes that are just what you're seeing. They're not inhabited, there, there's no for sale sign, they're just, they're falling in and it's, you know, it, it kind of hits you, darn it, we. We would rather have a, rather nicer view of our city than some of these, and they have, we've not had, have not been addressed in many years.
And the current process on that, how does that go, if the city maintains or mows the property, the city's expenses build up to a point and that gets turned over and assessed to taxes and then if the taxes get to a certain point. Then does the city take the property or how, what's?
I don't, I don't know that there's any step to where the city actually takes the property. But I'm also not one hundred percent certain on this, on this field, just because during the transition, code enforcement left. The transition to where I, you know, went down to Renee's old office and Renee retired, code enforcement did actually relocate to the police department and so. That has, has, I've never really had managerial portion of that, so I can't really say specifically what our process is, I just know that. Chief Swager has done a phenomenal job in addressing and making sure that all of those liens were getting filed.
And you mentioned our budget, do we get our money back, somehow if we tear that down, do, do we, do we have a way to recoup our, our costs that we did, we certainly should have.
Right, that's my point behind this, I think just because you make this rule, okay, so we have liens filed out the wazoo at the county. What good does that do, because if people aren't going to pay that anymore than they weren't going to pay the taxes before.
So it's only going to get it back when it sells because it's whatever.
And some of them will never, some of them will never sell, so what I'm saying, I think that other cities have dealt with this by just changing the rules to expedite that whole process and say. If you don't pay the taxes and you don't pay the liens up to current within a certain amount of time, it goes to auction or whatever and the proceeds go to pay the fines and then it goes to someone that promises to build on it within a certain amount of time.
Right, I, I, I'd be curious to investigate what our final process, or what our final step in that process is, I can, maybe try and do a report for you next.
That'd be great, because I think that's something we need to have the full history of how that process would go from beginning to end and figure out a way to expedite it to really get that situation turned around.
And like you say, of course you're in it, I can see some blowback here, there's going to be people, these are elderly, but you know, mine still needs to be addressed.
And it does need to be addressed, there are some things I can see where some of the blowback is, is that it looks like the, the city or the state or whatever is coming in and trying to take my property from me. I mean, it's going to be, there's just different things, obviously if it's a dilapidated structure where it's, it's falling down, it's like, well, this is why and it's empty, there's nobody in it.
That even becomes a safety issue.
Right, it's a health and safety issue and a fire hazard and all these other issues.
That's why I'm never, I'm never afraid to use my media relations to explain that story, I don't think that's a hard story.
Well, it also shouldn't cause a hardship on the city to have all these legal expenses and managerial expenses and fines and fees and all of that that they never get paid back for.
Right.
Because these people refuse to pay.
So we don't get paid back and we don't get to progress and so that's, that's not a hard story to sell to anyone, because yes, it's, it's always easy to say that big brother's in their, in their business, but. People are also interested in the, in the full story.
If you live next to that house, is what you should say.
You're, you're cheering them on.
How would you feel if this was on both sides of your house?
Take a look at this and this.
Along with the cats and the rats and the vagrants and the spray paint and I mean.
Well, that's when the pictures are taken and this is where it's plastered over the media and says, this is what we're dealing with, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, we're not talking about grandma's paints peeling on her house and we're going to kick her out. And that's, and that's the way some people may perceive that.
And they will perceive it that way.
But that's not what we're talking about.
I know, that's, I agree, it's just.
I complimented a lady on album with today, I do it every time I see her out there, you have the best looking house, you keep it up and unfortunately the homes on either side are just, they've got to be distressing to her. Unless her heart, she keeps a stiff upper lip and makes her place look great.
Yeah.
Well, on that note, do we need to, have we discussed this now fully for tonight, I think?
I think so.
And if we've said everything, anybody else that we want to talk about in this thing, if not, we could go on to see, Mr. Mosley, do you have any comments?
Oh, I've talked way too much tonight, thank you guys for understanding, I wasn't real sure where this conversation was going to go, to be real honest with you, because it'd been a few weeks since we've met and. It is kind of a broad agenda item, but I, I'm very encouraged in where we're heading, so thank you guys very much again for always volunteering your time and that means, you know. A world of difference to this community and I, I hope that we're getting to a point where you can see that difference that these volunteer hours are making, so I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you for bringing that to us and thank you for bringing the, the design standards in so we could go over them, I think, again, to make just some points, I think we've touched some really good. Good issues here too, maybe making some of these a little stronger, actually turn them into an actionable ordinance. That we can and do have some teeth in other than just suggestions, which obviously are causing some issues and some, some heartburn over different areas, so. Any other comments or more comments?
Well, Mr. Mosley, again, and I know you have a lot on your plate, would you have any ideas whatsoever, would we can maybe be, are we a month or two out where we can kind of address these, how much, how much?
I would say.
I think this is something we just want to stay out, just keep it like a bulldog, keep our teeth in it.
I would say I'm going to try and go over this with a fine tooth comb by April, but don't be surprised if it's not on the April agenda and it waits till May. Just because I know, like I said, that April agenda might be, you know, a good conversation as well, so.
Very well, well, thank you, Brock, if that's everything, if there's nothing else, then I.
Second picture.
So moved, we are adjourned.
Thank you.